Okay, Kenmore City Council meeting is now in session. Clerk, will you please take the role?
Councilmember Marshall. Councilmember Sasson.
Here.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Here.
Councilmember Lutzis.
Here.
Deputy Mayor O'Kane.
Here.
Mayor Herbig.
Here.
Councilmember Culver.
Councilmember Culver is excused. I believe he is arriving late. Oh, here he comes.
Present.
All present.
Okay, now on to the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that the city of Kenmore is situated upon the ancestral lands of the Snohomish, Snoquamish, Sakswaddle, Duamish, Stillguamish, Tulalip, Sukamish, Muckelshoot, and other tribes who are part of the Coast Salish peoples. Recognize and express our deepest respect for their enduring stewardship and profound relationship with this land, which they have cherished and protected since time immemorial. We honor the First Peoples, acknowledge their vibrant cultures, and commit ourselves to learning from their wisdom in our journey to promote justice, equity, and mutual understanding. Fledged to stand alongside these communities in acknowledging past injustices, working towards a future that respects and celebrates the diverse heritage of this land. Now on to the flag salute. Now on to agenda approval. Any objections? Hearing none. Today's meeting agenda has been approved. Now on to proclamations. I'm going to pass this first proclamation for Peace Officers Memorial Day along to Councilmember Lutzis.
Thank you. Whereas, the safety and security of our communities are of paramount importance, and we owe a debt of gratitude to those who dedicate their lives to protecting the public. And whereas, peace officers play a vital role in maintaining peace, order, and justice in our society, often risking their own lives to safeguard the lives of others. And whereas, Peace Officers Memorial Day is a day to honor and remember brave individuals who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty, paying tribute to their courage, dedication, and selflessness. And whereas, for officers who have been injured or have fallen in the line of duty, their families and their legacies are forever changed by the loss. And whereas, it is essential to recognize the sacrifices of peace officers and their families, and to express our profound appreciation of their service and sacrifice. And whereas, the city of Kenmore is proud of the exceptional presence, service, and contributions of the Kenmore police officers, service to their residents. Now therefore, I Nigel Herbig, Mayor of the city of Kenmore, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim May 15th, 2024 to be Peace Officers Memorial Day throughout the city of Kenmore. We urge all residents to join with the city council in this observance where we commemorate law enforcement, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their duties and responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to our beautiful and safe Kenmore.
Thank you, Councilmember Lutzis. We do have Officer Blair Carlin here to accept the proclamation. Would you care to say a few words?
Can you come to the mic? Thank you.
I'll just speak on behalf of all the Kenmore officers. We accept the proclamation and always appreciate your guys' support. And I know all of us are very happy to be working in Kenmore and looking forward to even better days to come.
Well, thank you for the good work you do for our community. And would you like to take a picture with the council?
Yeah, absolutely.
Next, we have a proclamation for Safe Boating and Paddling Week, and this will be presented by Councilmember Shrubnik. Whereas, the city of Kenmore is bounded by 7.8 miles of shoreline along Lake Washington, the Sumamish River, and Swamp Creek. And whereas, a significant number of Kenmore residents of all ages engage in recreational boating. And whereas, water recreation activities such as paddling and boating significantly contribute to the quality of life in our community, providing opportunities for enjoyment, exercise, and relaxation. And whereas, ensuring the safety of individuals engaging in these activities is of great importance to prevent accidents, injuries, and loss of life. And whereas, with the surge of people engaging in paddling activities since 2020, many without training, paddling fatalities now constitute more than 25% of all boating fatalities nationwide. And whereas, education and awareness regarding safe paddling and boating practices are essential for promoting responsible water recreation and preserving the well-being of participants. And whereas, the mission of the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary is to promote and improve recreational boating safety by teaching safety courses and conducting vessel safety checks. Now therefore, I Nigel Herbig, Mayor of the city of Kenmore, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim May 18 through 24, 2025, to be Safe Paddling and Boating Week throughout the city of Kenmore. We encourage all residents to wear life jackets and practice safe paddling and boating. Thank you, Councilmember Shrubnik. And I have one more proclamation to read. It's Kids to Parks Day. Whereas, Kids to Parks Day is a national day of outdoor play celebrated annually on the third Saturday of May to empower kids and encourage families to get outdoors and visit local parks, public lands, and waters. And whereas, Kids to Parks Day is intended to foster future outdoor enthusiasts and develop the next generation of park stewards by engaging kids in memorable outdoor experiences. And whereas, Kids to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and the outdoors. And whereas, kids need outdoor experiences to promote their physical health, mental well-being, creativity, and connection to the natural world. And whereas, the city of Kenmore features spectacular local and state parks for families to enjoy, including Rhododendron Park, Log Boom Park, and Tloughwoodies Park. And whereas, Kids to Parks Day will recognize the importance of recreating responsibly while enjoying the benefits of the outdoors. Now therefore, Nigel Herbig, Mayor of the city of Kenmore, on behalf of the city council, does hereby proclaim Saturday, May 17th, 2025, to be Kids to Parks Day throughout the city of Kenmore. We encourage all Kenmore residents, especially kids, to stay connected with the great outdoors. Now, Madam City Manager, where's the fun?
Well, it's my pleasure as a mother of an Eagle Scout to introduce another Eagle Scout, Dale Hurt. And Marita's going to come up and say a few words about Dale's project, and then we get to see some pictures of it and hear about the benefits to Kenmore. So, Marita, take it away.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, and staff. I'm Marita Colburn, the Recreation Program Supervisor here at the city. And for a season, I was in charge of the volunteer programming, including the Eagle Scouts, which is great. And so Dale actually came to the city last year and proposed this project, and it was just a slow burn. And we were finally able to bring it all to fruition this last end of the winter, early spring, which is great. I did learn in the lobby right before this meeting from Dale Hurt Senior that this is actually the third Eagle Scout project in the city of Kenmore just from their family. And so they have contributed quite a bit to our city, which is great. And they have one more to go, so we're getting one more out of them, which is terrific. And so I'm going to introduce Dale Hurt to come forward. He's going to talk about his project. And come on up, Dale. Great that it's also Boating and Safety Week. This really ties into that. We are so appreciative. Thank you so much.
Hello. Mr. Mayor, city council members. My name is Dale Hurt, and I am resident of Kenmore. I've been a scout for 11 years, so more of my life than I haven't been. The reason I decided to start scouting was between scouting and karate. And I heard you could learn self-defense and scouting as well, so more or less. The reason I decided to choose a life jacket lona station and as my Eagle Scout project was I wanted something that I could be proud of and that would last, and that was different than the other Eagle Scout projects that happened in my troop. The last two, was the last three or two, were three. The last three were cleaning up a graveyard. Very good, but I wanted to be something different than the last three in my troop. The last, the most fun I had while working on building the life jacket lona station was helping the younger scouts put together the roof and helping all the scouts lift it all up at the end. And we had to get everyone coordinated, and the adults as well, because it was real heavy. The most trouble I had was, well, if I could do it again, I'd triple-check the material, well, triple-check that I had the right length of wood for the materials, because I didn't do that, and we had to go out and buy another one on the day that we were putting it all together, so that slowed it down a lot. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Sasson has a comment.
I just have a comment. I grew up in a family where my father was an Eagle Scout, and he had his Eagle Scout card in his wallet until the day he passed. But he was also a small boat man. We sailed little boats with no engines. And I just am so delighted to think of him this evening with your project. I am so proud of you, and he would be delighted, so thank you so much.
I'd like to thank my troop, my family, and my friends for helping me put this all together. I'd also like to send a special thanks to Ms. Colburn and Mr. Quinn for helping me with their guidance, leadership, and advice.
Dale, thank you so much for your commitment to the Scouts, to the city of Kenmore, and your troop, and your leadership to get this really meaningful project done. One thing I always think about with a life vest, you never know who you save. And it's a wonderful legacy to leave for a city, so thank you.
Thank you.
Dale, would you like to take a picture with our council? Now on to public comment. Welcome to the council's meeting. Please address your comments to the mayor and council. You'll have three minutes to speak. If there are more than 20 speakers, time will be reduced to two minutes per speaker. The clerk will call your name when it's your turn. The presiding officer may choose to alternate between in-person and online comments. State your name and city of residence, and keep within the allotted time. To make every person feel welcome and safe here, please refrain from booing, clapping, heckling, yelling, or other interruptions. This meeting is being recorded for transparency. Thank you for being here and for sharing your input respectfully. Virtual public comment pre-registration process for your information is to provide public comments virtually. Please fill out the virtual comment request form in advance of the meeting. The form opens Tuesdays at noon and closes Mondays at noon. You will be confirmed by the city clerk. If you are having difficulty, please reach out to the city clerk at awarhall@kenmorewa.gov, excuse me.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. We do have two guests wishing to speak, one onsite and one online. Patrick O'Brien, followed by Stacy Valenzuela, please.
Patrick O'Brien, Kenmore, Washington. You just had a meeting in Shoreline, and we see no results of that in your printed documentation. It would have been nice to know what you all were talking about and have a copy of it here so that people would know. I think we need to rewrite the public comment as far as holding up the native land. I think we've done everything but that. The asphalt plant, perfect example where the city took the side of the applicant for more asphalt fumes. That's reprehensible. We've asked for testing with core sampling, which is a state-of-the-art. Before, during, and after the dredging project, the city got on board and fought us. And we actually were going to go through the hearing examiner. And then after our time had given up on going through King County, the city hearing examiner said, "Oh, I don't have authority over that." So all that work was gone, all the testimony gone, all the stuff that was submitted by Janet Hayes, me, and other people, gone. So there is no fairness in that process. You're going to have electric charger. Is it going to be Tesla-capable, or do we hate Tesla now? All the new code that you're getting... I want to see red line copies of what you got, what's being proposed. The public has no idea what they're planning over there. You do have several active attractive nuisances and you should tell them what an attractive nuisance is, if you would please. We need to freeze the maintenance facility right now. You don't have the money. A selection, a select committee to investigate the fraud of the selection site for the Kenmore Maintenance Facility, totally in order. City requests core sampling before, during and after the dredging project. Army Corps of Engineers needs to get a letter from you petitioning for that. Stop the development on 61st. They spent $10 million planning it, acquiring the Jack in the Box. They need another $30 million to do it in the state and the feds don't have it. Are you going to dig a hole in the ground and just leave it there? I would say mothball that thing. Shut down the lights and activity at Lake Point. They're going 24/7 now. Nobody's watching that site. They don't care. And what they said was a temporary use. I've heard they're going to do that forever until somebody makes them shut down. You're not watching that. So there's noise, light. And please report on the lawsuit with the Chateau Construction who is out of business. I don't know who you're suing if they're gone. And best year, no development and cut the city budget in half because you don't have state money and you sure as heck don't have federal money. Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy Valenzuela, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Can you hear me? I hear you. Go on.
Stacy Valenzuela, Kenmore. Missy Middle was supposed to encourage providing all sizes of housing at all income levels to meet the needs of lower levels incomes too. As Bob Ferguson stated, if you have a crisis, you have to act like you have a crisis. Doing business as usual is not going to work. Are you hearing our residents? We need forward thinking, not the same old rejections of locals' information, especially to build 50% and 30% and below affordable housing. Why has Kenmore not provided extremely 30% low affordable housing units after years stating the priority of the council was to build senior affordable housing? Why do we have to wait another five years for 50% AMI workforce housing to be built? The inclusionary zoning seems to be excluding, almost forcing out our low and fixed income residents. Kenmore has a high 60% to 70% cost burden. The regional affordable housing King County dashboard has shown for years that 30% AMI and 50% AMI and below rental level affordable housing units are the most needed, as well as 50% to 69% home ownership are the highest disparity. Why are we not taking care of this? We also should require 25% of all developments have affordable housing units at 50% and below. We know of a handful of developers, including Imagine Housing, that had been attempting for years to build truly affordable housing, but were blocked. Reports are coming forward. Current average fixed income is $23,500. That's 1957 a month. Yet most of my neighbors are making $500 to $1,500. Let's really have some fun. I challenge you to try to live in our shoes for six months and budget that income. Then maybe you'll see how every $10 to $20 that you add to taxes in the six different utilities on top of King County tax, sales tax, increased in Medicare, COPEA, and suddenly all your, you're all in the red. That small COLA increase only covered one-third of all those costs. Where is the senior exempt and discount for all those needs? Also, in regards to the Public Works, what does Public Works do? You keep adding that there's more maintaining of parks, of sidewalks by the residents. But you're paying $40 million for Public Works. You hired all these people and a Parks Director, but yet there's consultants and contractors that are doing the work? Why are we funding all this? I think you can do better and it could cost less. Just keep contracting it out if taxpayers have to do the work and it's too costly and physical challenging. Please.
Thank you, Ms. Valenzuela.
Do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, okay, includes our speakers list.
Thank you. And thank you to our commenters. Now on to the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
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 I think we need a motion first, Deputy Mayor, I'm sorry.
Oh, oh, sorry. Motion for, to approve the consent agenda.
So move second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Consent agenda is approved. Now on to our business agenda. Draft middle housing, accessory dwelling unit, ADU, and affordable housing, inclusionary zoning, code amendments presented by Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director Debbie Bent and Principal Planner Todd Hall for discussion and direction.
Good evening, council. We're continuing our discussion on middle housing regulations. Following up from last week, we, one of the main questions that we had was regarding the affordable housing, inclusionary housing component. And we needed to clarify what the state law was and what we could do with respect to that. So Mike Stanger with Arch has updated information in the packet in terms of a memo that outlines a proposed approach, if that's the direction council wishes to go. But maybe if we could allow Mike to go through a quick presentation to sort of explain what the law is and what the different approaches would be, if that's okay, Deputy Mayor, to do that.
Yes, please proceed.
There we go. Mike Stanger, Senior Planner with Arch. Glad to be with you again. I want to keep this as simple as possible. The good news is that that the Planning Commission's recommendation is consistent with state law, as has been explained to us by the Commerce Department. And so if you wish to adopt what the commission recommended, the only thing that we suggest adding to that was a couple of edits that are in your packet to clarify the, or make the zoning section of this, of middle housing consistent with the affordable housing section of 18, Chapter 18. So basically, what that recommendation holds is that in R4 and R6 zones, all residential development of projects of four or fewer than four units would be exempt from inclusionary zoning. And projects four or more units would have that inclusionary requirement of 10% of the units affordable, 80% median if they were owner occupied or 50% median if rent are occupied. In the case of parcels of projects that were further than a quarter mile from major transit stops, then the state law kicks in, which says that if they have a base density, base unit density of two units per lot, if you, if the builder wants to go to three or four units on any lot in their project, then they would be required to have an affordable unit onsite on that lot. And you could make that affordable unit count against the, any units that were required by the inclusionary 10%. So the way that I would frame your options at this point, near transit stops, the Planning Commission recommended that inclusionary requirement. The state requirement for the going above the base unit density doesn't apply near the transit stops because you would already permit four units on a lot. But the affordability levels are, as I stated before, you've had some discussions about exemptions from the inclusionary requirement. And I want to make clear that there are exemptions, there would be no exemptions available for the state's requirement. But for the inclusionary requirement, if you wanted to, you could do something based on project size. Like I mentioned earlier, Planning Commission recommended a threshold of four units for the inclusionary requirement to take effect. Another route to go that the commission considered was to exempt units that were smaller than a certain size. If you wanted to go that route, staff would recommend 1,500 square feet, but it could be 1,000 square feet. It could be 2,000 square feet or whatever you thought would be beneficial for middle housing development and affordability. But I want to point out that we would not recommend trying to do both of those because that would effectively eliminate any affordability from any middle housing development. So that was near the transit stops. Again, away from the transit stops, meaning further than a quarter mile, the inclusionary requirement would be the same. And as recommended by the Planning Commission, it would be, that would take effect for four units or more. But you could have a unit size exemption instead, if you like. If you, the, the, excuse me, the state requirement for the onsite affordable unit for going above two units per lot would be required. And you don't have any options on how to deal with that. Your other option would be not to have an inclusionary requirement at all. And in that case, the only affordability for middle housing would happen if they exceeded the two units per lot. I mentioned, this is just another recap. If you wanted to think of the unit size exemption instead of the project size exemption. And again, you could, if there were both, a state, I'll just call it a state-required affordable unit onsite, you could count that against your inclusionary requirement. I have a number of examples, but they're, if you wanted to ask, well, how would this apply to a project of a certain type or size or something? But that would be tedious unless you wanted to see it. So I just have that in reserve if you want to look at it. I'd be happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions? Councilmember Sasson?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Mike. It's good to see you again. You were, we had a conversation about fee in lieu last time you were here, last week.
Yes.
And it was unclear whether that consideration was in keeping with law or not. And I'm just looking for resolution about that.
Yes, thank you. I left that out of the sides for some reason. They, the city can require as part of their inclusionary program, or they can collect a fee in lieu of units that would be required as part of an inclusionary program. You could not collect a fee in lieu of the state-required affordable unit. And to, as a reminder, the fee in lieu, as it's been proposed in the code amendments, would apply to projects that are between four and nine units. And that's because the 10% inclusionary set aside would result in a fraction. And so rather than make, build a roundup to a full unit or rounding down, they would pay a fee in lieu of that. Our financial analysis of that suggests that a fee of $6 per total square foot in a project would be a reasonable fee. That's not written into the code. What's written into the code is that the council would adopt a fee based on a staff's recommendation at a later time. And because the, the code amendments, the inclusionary program would not take effect until the end of 2025, you have some time built in to be able to do that. And we would return with more deep, more further analysis on what that, how you might want to go about setting that figure.
Councilmember Shrebnik?
Thank you for that. I had that question as well. I feel like I need to say now in English. So the, the state requirement is for an affordable unit if you have more than how many units?
In this case, if it's, if you're away from transit and you want to do more than two units on a lot.
More than two, right.
Then you have to make one of them affordable.
And then if you're by transit, within a quarter mile.
The base unit density is four.
Right, but is there a state requirement for affordability?
No, ma'am.
At no units, no number of units. There's no requirement for affordability within the quarter mile?
Correct.
Only outside of the quarter mile? Okay, I'm just repeating.
Thank you.
Interesting. Okay, so, so we're sticking with outside of a quarter mile. The unit number is more than two. There is an affordable unit required based on the state requirement. So how does that align with the fee in lieu idea, which is fractional units for the, what the Planning Commission said, you know, between four and nine? How do those square?
Well, maybe it would be, this would be a good time to look at an example.
Yes, please.
So let's say, there's a lot here. And forgive me for that, but here we go. So let's go in the realm of the Planning Commission's recommendation, which is to exempt projects under four units. But in this case, there would be four units. If you were going to build those four units on one lot, then you might do that through two duplexes or four cottages or fourplex or whatever. But it's all treated the same. If you were near a transit stop, you wouldn't have the state requirement for an onsite unit, but you would have a 10% requirement. And so you would pay a fee in lieu of .4 units.
Based on the Planning Commission's recommendation?
Correct.
Not based on the state? So, okay.
Right.
So now let's move to the...
So if you were away from a transit stop, the 10% inclusionary would require .4 affordable units. But the state would say, you have to put one affordable unit on the lot. So we're suggesting that you count that, you count that onsite affordable unit as satisfying the inclusionary requirement as well. And so don't worry about the .4.
Yeah, for sure that, I guess, I, I mean, the state's requirement is more stringent.
Right.
And will not result in any being built.
Quite possibly.
Yeah, I mean, that seems so. In summary. near transit, within a quarter mile, we do not have affordability. And in our city, one quarter mile from those transit stops is almost all zoned much higher density or is single family with covenant. So this almost doesn't apply. I mean, there's very, I believe, very few properties. Is that correct? Okay.
That's my understanding.
So away from transit is what we're talking about. And because of the state requirement that goes beyond, for affordable units, that goes beyond our planning commission recommendation, we're unlikely to see development of more than three structures, street dwelling units on a lot. Because soon as you hit that fourth, right, or is it the fifth? Is it, is it the fourth? Sorry.
Well, the
Yeah.
Now, I have to admit that the, that the, the single family detached, you know, how that figures in here is confusing to me. So that's not what I'm dealing with.
Yeah, I wasn't even thinking of that, but I, yeah. So let's say you have, because we do, mostly single family homes on those parcels currently. And maybe they don't want to tear it down.
Right.
So you're talking about adding a duplex would give you three total. But if you added a, I'm not saying people would do this, but let's say you added a triplex, a stacked flat, and there was room, and it was developable, and there was no covenants and all of those things. At the point you add that fourth unit, one plus three, that has to be affordable.
Yes.
Right? Okay. Thank you.
Other question? Councilmember Culver?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Kane. Just want to make sure I'm understanding the recommendations correctly. So planning commission has recommended inclusionary zoning. The minority report from the planning commission has also recommended inclusionary zoning. And staff are also recommending inclusionary zoning. So that's pretty unanimous swell of support. I, I have that right so far, right?
Yes.
Sweet. And some of the question, one way to potentially look at this is, do we want to go with option A or option B, which is really what the two sides of the planning commission recommendation were about? And one of them requires a public hearing and the other does not. I've got this right so far, right?
The only thing that would require a public hearing is if you wanted to require more affordability than is in the code amendments. And that's not being proposed.
It might trigger it based if you went, because the planning commission are based on project size. If you went with the unit size exemption, that is a change. So that could trigger a public hearing.
Copy. I, based on history of housing related things not always surviving public hearings, I would strongly encourage the choice that does not necessitate a public hearing. I am not afraid of a public hearing. It's not me I'm worried about. Thank you.
Councilmember Shrevnik?
Sorry, I have one more clarification. Maybe I'm just slow processing tonight. So the planning commission's inclusionary zoning recommendation, which was based not on the size, but on the number of units, right? Because of the state requirement, the planning commission's recommendation only applies to the near transit ones? Because I think the state requirement is more stringent as soon as you move away from transit.
Well, there, there will be or could be cases, proposals that would not trigger the state required unit, but could invoke the inclusionary zoning.
Can, can you paint me a picture of that? Okay.
Yes, so with a four unit project, if you look at the, the two lot or the four lot scenario, somebody came in with a, with four lots and wanted to build single family homes on them. None of that would trigger, would require an onsite unit. But the 10% inclusionary requirement would, would require a .4.
Even if they're not doing middle housing?
Yes, the way that the, the code amendments are written. It would have, because, and the reason for that is because the inclusionary housing is being invoked because of the, of the general upzone that adds value and development potential to the land regardless of
What you actually do with it?
Right.
Oh. That was not clear until this moment. Okay, so, because I think we asked about that exact thing last week, or whenever we met before, of, you know, are we actually asking the developers of single family homes to, pony up comes to mind, but participate in inclusionary zoning? And I, I thought I had heard that it only applied to middle housing forms. But it sounds like if you just buy four lots and you build four single family homes, it would have, so like regular developments that we see all the time that are building single family homes are now going to contribute to our affordable housing?
Correct.
Fund? That changes it for me, for sure. I mean, because, because otherwise, we were, we were kind of, what we thought we were doing two weeks ago, or at least what I thought I heard, is we were kind of penalizing only middle housing and, and leaving single family untouched. But that's, although probably developers won't do four units, but maybe they will. So, okay, that's, that's helpful. Okay.
Does help, except for that state requirement.
And the, and the fund, I know Councilmember Luthis asked, where does the money go? I mean, it's going to our own fund, not necessarily Arch, right?
Not necessarily Arch. It's, it's really up to the city. But there is a code already in 1877 that, that describes how that should be handled.
Yeah. Mayor Herbig?
Sorry, it took a second to get off of mute. Thank you. I, after looking at this and thinking about it over the last week, I am still very much leaning towards project size based inclusionary zoning, if we're going to go with inclusionary zoning. Because again, if we're charging based on the number of units that people are building, we will get less number, we will get less units built. If we are asking instead and saying, if you're building something above 2,000 square feet, then you're going to, or, you know, 1,500, whatever, then you're going to pay into inclusionary zoning. That both penalizes what we already have too much of, which is large, single family houses, and incentivizes what we're looking for, which is smaller, more affordable units. I'm not saying they're affordable under, you know, the definition of affordable housing as we think about it, but they're more affordable than the single family units that would be built otherwise. So I am still very much in favor of moving to a size based inclusionary zoning requirement, if we're going to go that route. And I also, sorry, I'm dealing with a cold right now. So I just lost my track of thought. I apologize. I'll raise my hands if it comes back.
Councilmember Luthis?
Yeah, Mayor Herbig summed up a lot of what I was thinking too, that, again, I'm a little confused maybe about the, the, the unit size exemption versus the project size exemption. I understand what both indicate. And I thought that the unit size exemption was the one that talked about square footage and project size within, was the number of units? Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. Then I'm on the same page with Mayor Herbig here about the unit size exemption that, you know, in my mind, I think looking at 2,000 square feet or above would make the most sense to me because then it encourages lower thresholds without, you know, penalizing some of those who, who want to develop middle housing. I mean, if you look at, say, for instance, cottage housing, you could build three, if we went with the project size exemption, you could build three major cottages over 3,000 square feet or whatever it may be. And those, you know, those come in under, but that's not what we're looking for here. And I think that going forward, the unit size exemption is what would essentially elicit the, the response that we're looking for. And, and that way, those units that are above that certainly have the, the profit margin to, to contribute to, to the requirements here.
Any other questions? Councilmember Sassen?
For the public, I do want to clarify that we, both the council and the public with the links in the agenda have the redlined documents available to us, suggested in public comment. The priority is to make it possible for things to get built and to people, for people to be able to afford to live in them. And there are so many more words involved in this project than that summary. That I really do feel like I'm leaning on staff and planning commission and Arch for, for more guidance than I, than I might otherwise. So I appreciate you coming to us again. There was a question that came up from the planning commission that I am not sure that I understand what we're doing about it, which is that need for a clear definition of applicant in code. And I'm wondering if we have a plan for how to address that. Remember that? Does that sound familiar? Talked about it last time. It was brought up by the planning commission, that there was a concern that there might be a wiggle room if we don't clearly define so that adjacent lots couldn't necessarily be.
I thought that we added that in there, but I, I'd have to pull up the code and double check.
Okay. It, it may well be in here, but again, I got a little lost. And so I just want to make sure that I'm doing my due diligence to follow up on that particular issue. I think the concern was that if a single developer owned adjacent lots, that we treated them as a single application and not separate.
Now, that is provided for in 1877.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we really, that we get super clear about that. Then in terms of if we move to unit size exemption, that is a decision that I could certainly get behind. I do feel on the fence between whether we choose 1,500 square feet or 2,000 square feet. Both are livable sizes. And then I also am understanding that that, if we move towards size of unit, that will trigger a public hearing, and I just want to ensure that we have time for that.
We have time. If we get direction this evening, we would schedule a hearing on June 9th for those changes. But in answer to your question about size, I'll let Mike speak to why he thought 1,500 would be a good size.
I didn't hear that question asked yet. But though I did, as I mentioned last time, I studied all 250 some sales that occurred of new homes in Kirkland last year. And 130 something of them were middle housing units. The heavy majority of those were between 1,500 and 2,000 square feet. I don't remember the exact percentage, but you know, it's, it's certainly your judgment call. Just know that if, if the market behaves the same way that, or builders build the same things that they have in Kirkland that they have in, in Kenmore that they have in Kirkland, then most of the middle housing will be exempt from the inclusionary, the inclusionary requirement. And you would only get affordability in those units when somebody builds more than two on a lot. And the market, now, prices are different in Kenmore than Kirkland. But in Kirkland, those market rate, middle housing units are getting well over 200% of median income and sometimes between 4 and 500%.
Mike, just to clarify, are you, I'm sorry to interrupt, are you saying that in Kirkland, most of the units are at 1,500 square feet? Is that, is that what I'm understanding?
Between 1,500 and 2,000.
Right. So if we were to make the exception of 1,500, we would capture more of what is being built in the market than if we choose 2,000 square feet?
Correct.
Right. And I, I would guess that this room is probably more than, this room is probably 2,000 square feet. Trying to get a sense of what size is. Anyway, I, 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 my, my house was originally 650 square feet. So to me, I feel like, okay, I, I feel like I have a good sense. I'm just trying to give other people a sense. Thank you very much.
The mayor has his hand up.
Mayor Herbig?
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I went through my notes and I found the other thing that I wanted to flag. It was brought to our attention that we don't have any maximum size for cottages defined in this. And that is something that could be exploited. If somebody had a larger lot, they could build, you know, massive homes and call them cottages and fall under our current zoning and fall under this zoning instead of being treated as a single family house. And I was curious what staff, you know, A, was that something that the planning commission considered? And B, if staff has any thoughts on cottage housing maximum sizes, if we wanted to look at that.
I'm trying to pull up the code unless Todd's got it immediately pulled up here. I'll, I'll look, and if we continue the conversation, let you know when I find it.
Councilmember Luthis?
I just really want to go back to that comment that we were having, that discussion we were having about, in Kirkland, you said, again, recently, the market has shown the middle housing is coming in between 1,500 and 2,000 square feet? Is that right?
Yes, some smaller, some bigger, but the bulk of it is in that range.
I, I think for me personally, I'd want to then put us at the 2,000 so that we're not then putting an additional onus on that middle housing that's being built in the market already. If we put it at the 15, and that's what the market is demanding right now, then all of that middle housing is going to have this inclusionary zoning additional burden on that. And that's why I think if, if, if we see that right now, middle housing is coming in at about in between 1,500 to 2,000, then I'd want to go at 2,000 so we don't accidentally make middle housing more difficult to develop. I, I think we want to encourage that. So that's why I'm saying, if it's over 2,000, that way we can still promote what the market's already doing and then also again, capture some larger properties, developments, units that have that margin to be able to afford that. I don't think that a lot of the individuals who are hoping to support through this are the ones going for 2,500, 3,000, 3,500 square foot homes. So I think 1,500 and a little bit over that is, is safe, at least in my mind.
Councilmember Shrevnik?
Not sure I have a comment anymore. That was so well argued. My only comment was that I think at 1,500, you can still build a three bedroom, which is sort of what the market tends to want. It's a small three bedroom, but, but I, you're, you made your case.
Councilmember Marshall?
And again, did you do a price, I think you presented it last time, a general prices? I can't remember what it was, but it was, weren't they in the neighborhood of like 800 grand we're talking about?
The 800 grand was for the smallest, in fact, I think there was only one unit in that that was, that was below a million dollars. So most of them are well above a million dollars.
I was too low. I was too low. Okay. Thank you.
That was Kirkland, is that correct?
Yes.
Councilmember Culver.
Thank you. So make sure I'm following Councilmember Marshall's question correctly. That 800,000 to a million actually is average sort of going rate in Kirkland for the units that we're talking about, right? I got that right?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear you.
I I'm just making sure that the question Councilmember Marshall was asking about the the total for a million dollars, that's like the going rate for the 1,500 to 2,000 square feet units. So I have that right?
Yes.
Okay.
I can look up those numbers.
Okay. Napkin math is fine, but what I'm hearing in there is these are already a million bucks and inclusionary zoning is probably not going to be prohibitive on that still getting built. Wait, do you have any sort of a read on that? I mean, for, if you could napkin math a little further for us, like what would the inclusionary zone sort of fee be on a million dollar project, so to say?
So the the now the fiscal analysis we did showed that at $6 a square foot, all of the projects, the scenarios that were feasible without the fee were still feasible with a fee, except for the townhomes. When we we had four townhome house project that was just kind of barely feasible. And when you applied the $6 fee, which was, I don't know, probably 20 to 30,000 dollars, then that knocked it in into the red, but not the red, but it just didn't make enough profit to be feasible.
Sure. So at $6 a square foot for a 2,000 square foot unit, we're talking about $12,000, which is 1.2% of the cost. That's probably not a deal breaker. Would would you say that's a fair assessment?
It's a small percentage of the net proceeds.
Great. And if we set the threshold too high, we would in fact be missing most of the development that's happening, right? We would, if there's like a bell curve of, okay, summer in the 15, summer in the 2,000, if we set it too high, then we're missing all that activity, right? And we're not developing much funding for affordable housing. We're kind of missing it. Missing middle. Do I have that right?
Then the fee would would only apply to larger units like, you know, a lot of townhomes, maybe some cottages, depending on what you decide to do with that, but mostly single family homes, duplexes and so forth.
Okay. So 1.2%, not a deal breaker, and we would potentially lose out on a lot of that activity. Cool. I I'm a data nerd. I would love to see the distribution of those, whether it's Kirkland or any other city of just what that looks like, but I don't need you to produce that on the spot. That can be a later thing. I'm just curious to see it. So anyway, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Todd.
Yeah, just back to Mayor Herbig's question earlier on the cottage housing side. So I just scanned the code and he's correct that we don't have a specific maximum size for cottage housing. There's a neighborhood benefit and the neighborhood benefits table. So that would be on page, so let me find it real really quick. So it would be page 120 of the packet. And that section is 1821035. It says it as a neighborhood benefit, if you limited to 1,200 square feet, you get a density bonus of 50%. However, there's no maximum size defined, so that's an oversight. So we'd, if the council wishes to add a maximum size, we should include that. So thanks for pointing that out.
Thank you. I I would say for cottage style housing, it would be wise to add a maximum size benefit. I could, I mean, and I I'm just going to, I haven't made a comment yet, but I lean towards the project size rather than number of units for similar reasons that our fellow council members have raised. I I can hear both the benefit of having the lower threshold at 1,500 to attempt to trigger more developer money coming towards the city and affordable housing. I see the concept there. My concern is that we really do want these houses built. And, you know, who are we to say, sitting in these chairs, that $12,000 isn't a lot of money to a developer that's paying to have these houses built? Also, who are they going to pass that $12,000 on to? But the people who are purchasing the lots. I personally live in a 1,289 square foot house, which is a three bedroom, one bathroom house built in 1954. And, you know, fortunately, it's laid out in a very comfortable way. I see benefit to encouraging smaller houses. I think they're livable. I community and really looking at the planning and design, which is not what we're talking about right now. So I'm not going to go into my fun land. But I think it's really important that these houses be built. I think in context to the, I know that was our median house range here around 1.2 million new. And we're not Kirkland, which I'm wondering where the neighborhoods are and, you know, what the differential is like on average housing in general. But comparison between Kenmore and Kirkland, which I don't think it's that great, except they do have higher property values in Ken and Kirkland in general. You can just say that off the top of our heads. But I do think it's important that we create an environment where housing is being built. I think smaller sizes do ultimately turn out to be more affordable. We have things way beyond our control, like inflation and other issues that are going on in our economy that are out of our control. And there's a need for housing. I just can't reiterate that enough. And so this is a place where if we do go to a public hearing, I want to hear what our community has to say. I actually think it's really important. You know, last week I was, our planning commission worked on this. We had something pretty baked. I was open to finding a way to bringing it back next year to discuss, but I think we need to make an important decision here. The state has made decisions that limit our approach to this. So I just want to state, I'm very comfortable, more, much more comfortable going towards project size than units. Count and I just want to thank you for your presentation. This is a big topic. It's a lot out of all of our hands. I feel like there are places where I actually, I understand where the state's coming from. On the other hand, it's also a place where we would like more local control in making some of these decisions. Councilmember Sasson, I think your hand was up first.
I just want to weigh in with agreement on finding an upper size limit for cottage housing. To weigh in with agreement on size of unit? I really feel tremendous benefit from both Councilmember Lutzes and Councilmember Culver's arguments. I feel like I I was in the middle of a logic ping pong there. Having done the math, I will say that at 1,500 square feet at $6 a square foot, that is $9,000. And at 2,000 square feet, as previously stated, it's $12,000. And I I just feel like for data purposes, we should acknowledge that. And I'm I'm tremendously grateful for all the work that the planning commission and our staff have done. This was so much to wade through. And again, I'm 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 grateful that Mike is able to be here tonight. Then that's what I have to say.
It'll be Councilmember Shrevnik, followed by Councilmember Marshall.
So I'm ready to make a motion regarding the inclusionary zoning piece. And then I have other questions that are unrelated, but I feel like we're at a point we could maybe productively go there. So and we have to get back to the cottage housing maximum as well. But for the inclusionary zoning fee, or is that what we're calling it, a fee?
Inclusionary zoning. It's fine.
Okay. So for inclusionary zoning, I make a motion to have that kick in at 15, excuse me, 2,000 square feet. We need any more as far as a motion?
Just to make sure that you're dead for that to be instead of the four unit.
Yes, instead of four, yeah. Yeah. So we're going with the unit size rather than project unit count, basically.
Thank you.
I'll I'll second that.
Any discussion? Oh, Mayor Herbig. Actually, Mayor Herbig will call on you after. Councilmember Sasson and Marshall or Marshall? What you were? Okay. Thank you. So Mayor Herbig.
Thank you. I appreciate Councilmember Shrevnik's motion. I personally would be more comfortable with a slightly smaller cutoff so that we are getting smaller, slightly more affordable units, or at least that's what we're trying to incentivize. So I would make a motion to change 2,000 down to 1,750 square feet.
Point of order, is that is that a friendly amendment or is that?
No, there's no such thing as a friendly amendment. It's an amendment to the motion that's in front of us, what I'm offering.
You had said motion and we didn't hear amendment. So, okay, it's.
Yes. Sorry, I'm I'm I would like to move an amendment to amend that from 2,000 down to 1,750.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can I speak to my amendment briefly?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, we've already talked about a lot of this, but I think we want to incentivize, you know, smaller, more affordable units to be built with the with the middle housing and not for it to just turn into, you know, large housing. We have enough of that as it is. I think 2,000 square feet is, you know, it's a pretty sizable place. I think 1,500 square feet, I can understand how that might be a little too small for the current market. I think 1,750 would get us to a place where we would be incentivizing something that is smaller than what's normally getting built, but also not and incentivizing those smaller pieces, but also not cutting off our ability to get to get, and excuse me, sorry, this cold is really kind of making me a little fuzzy, but would still allow us to get some of that incentive, incentive. The incentive, what's the word I'm looking for? Inclusionary zoning funds, I apologize, on the larger units, because those will still get built. So that's, that's why I made that motion.
Councilmember Culver.
Yeah, let me say for the record, I don't even hate the concept of size in the abstract. I wouldn't mind revisiting and looking at size in the future, certainly. I just don't want to not pass something in the near future. So I will be voting for this amendment and we could just firm up with staff, like if we could see, if 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 and assuming that this does go to a public hearing, yeah, if we could see a distribution curve or like whatever, send me raw data, I can I can mess with it. I'd be curious to see the financial projections on how does this actually affects things? Is it exempting too much? You know, did we pass something that's not really going to make much of a difference, et cetera? But in the meantime, I can't get behind 1,700. So, yeah.
Councilmember Lutzes.
Yeah. I agree with Councilmember Culver. You know, I would like to get something done and I'm always a fan of more data and I would like to see sort of the impact of where this falls and what this means, especially not only thinking about profit margins, but costs passed on, the the incidents passed on to consumers. Because, you know, where that falls, somebody who can afford a 1,500 square foot home versus 2,000, we think, yeah, it's maybe $200,000 difference or something like that. But over the long term, when talking about decades long mortgage, that adds up. And although it's only 9,000, although it's only 12,000, you know, compounded interest and and all of that over the long term does increase that. So I would be in favor of more data and then maybe revisiting this in the future with that. But, you know, I also recognize that policymaking is about making compromises. And so I'm certainly in favor of just coming to some sort of consensus this evening. And so I'll support this too.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Culver.
$12,000 over a 30 year mortgage is $400 a year plus interest, just FYI.
In the interest of moving this along, I'm comfortable with this, but I would like more data like Councilmember Lutzes, just as far as, I also just, I mean, I know we've got what we have before us and we've seen other housing statistics, but I'd like to be looking at average size home right now, you know, like what is the average size home that's built in Kenmore? You know, is is 2,000 what's average is 3,000, 2,500? You know, what is the square foot lot, I mean, square foot house that's being built? I I I think splitting the difference between 1,500 and 2,000 square feet is is somewhat reasonable, but I I did lean more towards 2,000 square feet just based on not having enough information here today. But I do report this. Any other discuss discussion?
Councilmember Shrevnik.
Just a quick question. Do we, do we know what any other cities are doing around this exact issue?
The unit size threshold?
Yeah.
So, yes. Samantha set theirs originally at 1,000 square feet, but they have told us that they intend to raise it to 1,500. Redmond does not have a unit size threshold, but they have exempted the existing square footage. So if you replace an existing home, then whatever that home size is, you don't have to pay a fee in that amount. Kirkland is still at the plan. Well, I think actually last week, they forwarded a recommendation to the city council. They're a little bit different situation in that they're not giving much development capacity in this because they already allow middle housing. They're planning on a second phase next year where they will adjust some development standards, like setbacks and height and other things that they expect will increase development capacity more. And they're going to redake up affordability at that time. But the planning commission's recommendation is for to exempt units up to 2,500 square feet.
Any further questions? Nigel, or Council, I mean, Mayor Herbig, please forgive me.
It's okay. I just wanted to clarify what I thought I just heard, which was that the, I didn't think that the planning commission had a recommendation on on unit size or were you talking about Redmond, so?
I was, I was talking about Kirkland.
Oh, Kirkland, okay. Thank you.
Anything further?
I have a, I have some, the Development Services Director is listening to the conversation and so Samantha is online, listening to the conversation. And you had a question about what is a typical new single family home size? And she said it's around 3,000 square feet of living space is typical for new single family residences in Kenmore.
Thank you. I I that that was important for me to hear. And I'm sure the rest of our council. Any further discussion on the amendment to the motion? Will you please take the role on the amendment to the motion reducing inclusionary housing zoning size from 2,000 to 1,750 square feet?
On that amendment, Councilmember Culver.
Yes.
Councilmember Shrevnik.
Yes.
Councilmember Lutzes.
Yes.
Councilmember Sasson.
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Kane?
Yes.
Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Motion passes.
With the motion passing, do we have any further discussion on the amended motion? Clerk, will you please take the role?
Thank you. And the motion is amended to, in regards to inclusionary zoning, set the unit size threshold at 1,750 square feet. Councilmember Culver?
No.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
I think yes, because I can you, is, well, we're already in the vote. Is there a way that you can clarify what we're voting on? I think we're voting on whether we want to have inclusionary zoning with a threshold of 1,750, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, then, yes.
Councilmember Lutzis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sasson?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Kane?
Yes.
Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Motion passes six to one.
Councilmember Marshall?
So if we've, I don't know if we've left the affordability question yet. If we have, I have just straight sort of regulation development-type questions, so I don't want to push us out of there, but I didn't know if we were done yet.
Yeah, did we want to revisit the cottage? Yeah, so I, while everybody was talking, I did some really quick research of three cities, and it appears that Shoreline's max size is 1,500, Kirkland's is 1,700, and Redmond's a little different. I'd see, I've seen 1,500 in a code, but also 800 if it's in part of a development. So I, again, I'd have to look at that, but Kirkland and Shoreline for sure was very clear in their code. So it was, again, Kirkland 1,700, Shoreline 1,500. Now, as I mentioned earlier, in our existing code draft, we have a neighborhood incentive, the bonus, if you do a 1,500 square foot, you get a 50% bonus. So something to think about if, you know, we're considering going that low, we might need to adjust something there. But if it was at the Kirkland size, which is 1,700, then so anyway, that's a couple of examples there. Max size, yes, clarification, yeah, max, maximum size, yep.
Councilmember Marshall, followed by Councilmember Shrubnik?
Okay, and I have different questions not related to the cottage. If you wanted to hit the cottage, that's fine with me.
We'd like to continue cottage.
Yeah, that's fine.
Councilmember Shrubnik? And remind me, other than the benefit if you're under 1,500, what, what would draw somebody, a developer, to do cottage housing in our current framework? Why would somebody want to do that?
Way that I'm reading it, so this is under the Public Benefits and Development Incentives section, starting on page 118 of the packet.
Right, but that's if you, that's if you are under 1,500, right. So depending on how we define cottage, let's, let's pretend that we were defining it, I don't know, 1,700 or 2,000. Why would, is there any reason someone would want to build a cottage form? For example, I believe the cottage form requires shared amenities, which means you're using of real estate for those shared amenities. Right, so I'm just trying to figure out, why would somebody build cottage housing at all if they? Is there any reason they would build it at all if they didn't get that neighborhood benefit, that density bonus?
Possibly, yeah, it's hard to.
Okay. Because I'm very interested in that form, and I'm trying to understand, and there's an email exchange with Debbie around this, too. I, I'm still a little lost on how it even happens, because on a lot, I believe we're only allowing three total units away from transit. Because the fourth one triggers an affordable unit that would make it probably infeasible. So again, I'm, I'm, I would love to see cottage housing, and I know that there are places that are doing it. Pulse Bow is a great example. They have a little neighborhood of cottages all in a row on several streets. It's a wonderful neighborhood. Little pastel colors, it's, it's just magical. I, I don't know how they did it. And I'm trying to figure out how, is, is that, it doesn't look like cottage housing, there's no shared amenities. But this is cottage housing, so what? How does that work? And how does that relate to this question of if, you know, where that maximum size fits into the whole discussion? That was too many questions, sorry.
That's a lot. I mean, I think in general, we can put a max on there. In your, why would somebody build it if you have to build amenities? Otherwise, it's sort of like small houses on a small lot, so, which you also would like to see. So I think it's just an additional housing type, and whether we can predict whether a developer would or would not build it, it's hard to say. I mean, there have been examples of smaller cottage-style developments built, so it could be, but I have no guarantee that it would happen in Kenmore. But the other option, it could just be small houses on small lots, rather than a cottage development.
And again, the only way you get small lots is to subdivide.
Yes.
Yeah, or do that unit lot thing.
Right, and there was some state law passed in this session regarding simplifying the process, which then would help that situation. We're not going to get into that this year, but again, I think it's, the rules are changing to sort of encourage and encourage small houses on small lots in terms of the platting process, so more to come on that.
I have a question that's related to cottage housing. And I don't know that it would be answered today, but would quality of living arrangements in a cottage-style housing make them, you know, desirable? Are cottage-style housing, say in Kirkland, or, you know, I just went down to Seabrook, and it's a beautiful example of cottage housing, and you know, the, the design, the layout, the community feel, like, I think part of, I mean, I'm just wondering, I'm wondering about the cap. I'm comfortable with a, you know, a cap on it, because I also think that 1,500 incentive is a driver to keep the houses small, that it's about a smaller type housing size, it's a scale, that there's shared amenities and a quality of living in that arrangement, I think. I'm just wondering, would that be a reason, you know, is there a market for that style of housing? Are we, you know, as we talk about that, would a developer make, build something like cottage-style housing because there's a market for it?
So just a point of clarification, earlier I misspoke about one of our code, so back on the neighborhood benefit page, I misspoke and said 1,500 square feet, it's actually gross floor area set of a maximum of 1,200 square feet, then you get a 15, so there's a bit of a difference there, so my apologies. So again, a couple cities had 1,500 or 1,700. I've looked at a couple of websites, again, as we're talking here, there's some non-cottage development type, just, they, they market them as cottage housing, right? So 1,500 square foot max in Redmond, I'm seeing them being marketed for over 1 million, 1.2 to 1.4 million, depending on the, on the builder, so this, that's kind of what's out there right now. So that's East Side again. A little bit different than Kenmore, but close, so.
Councilmember Sasson, followed by Councilmember Culver?
Two quick reflections. One is that in order to build Seabrook, they took out Forest. And my experience of cottage housing is on Whidby Island, there's a senior living facility there, assisted living facility on the island and in Freeland, and it is surrounded by cottages that are inhabited by seniors prior to needing the, you know, so that's the kind of community on that island that, that is the market, is elders who are not yet ready for assisted living, but are downsizing to a cottage. Very appealing, because it's the island and not the East Side, they are in the mid, you know, 600,000.
Councilmember Culver?
Thank you. I'm just doing some napkin math, because we got started on math, and that gets me excited. So the 2,000 square foot, $12,000 fee, $400 a year, $33 a month, great. Looking up the average mortgage for a million-dollar house at 6% interest, half a percent is what we're talking about. At a $6,000 mortgage, okay, great. But I also wanted to chime in, in terms of the impact that this could have. Kirkland, I think you cited the number of houses they built, it was like 250 was, I think, the number you said that you had tracked?
Were new, new home sales?
Great. I don't know that we will get that many, I don't know that number offhand, but if you accumulate $12,000 times 250 of such units getting built, that's 3 million bucks. That's what we ponied up for Holt, something like that, and another project that was slated to happen down the street, so, and that's one year. Lord knows those were both multi-year projects.
Aren't we, I thought we were talking about cottage housing and made a decision on the square footage on inclusionary housing already?
I'm just going back, just reaffirming math, if that's okay?
Yeah, I, yeah, I think, I think, just in interest of timeliness, focusing on this decision point on cottage housing would be the direction to go right now.
Okay. I have nothing further.
Okay. Any further discussion on cottage-style housing? Debbie, do you have any, need some more direction from us on this?
I need direction if you want to establish a maximum size, because if you do, then we would include that as part of the public hearing.
Okay. Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion, then we can discuss it. I'll make a motion at the maximum size for cottage housing, to be able to call it cottage housing, is 1,500 square feet.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mayor Herbig?
Oh, sorry, I lowered my hand.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, Councilmember Marshall?
I just had a clarification question from Ms. Bent. Did the staff want to have some input onto that maximum size, or was it content to think that the council could make a decision tonight?
I just need direction if there's going to be a change, so I can include that for the public hearing. So Todd gave you a couple of examples, those seem reasonable examples. So if you, if the motion passes, we would include that as part of the public hearing material.
Any further discussion? Clerk, will you please take the role on the motion?
Certainly. May I ask Councilmember Shrubnik to repeat the motion to confirm?
The, the motion is, sorry, to have a maximum size for cottage housing in our regulation for cottage housing to be 1,500 square feet.
Excellent. On that motion, Councilmember Shrubnik?
Ah, yes.
Councilmember Culver?
No.
Councilmember Lutzis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sasson?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor O'Kane?
Yes.
Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
The motion passes six to one.
Thank you. Next, I think we had Councilmember Marshall with some questions about affordability.
Or not about affordability, but regulations, the small houses, small lots, and that sort of thing, so it's more of a tug, I think. So last fall, we, the council passed, I think, an encouragement, after I brought it up, on language for incentivizing, reducing impervious surfaces or something like that. What measures in the proposal, I've seen some myself, I see some measures that are encouraging that echo that, but what measures do you see that reflect that?
One of us will try and port that code, but I think the intent was to keep similar-sized impervious surface as it is for single-family.
And so that's been reflected through, I've seen, I think, examples of that, so I wanted to confirm that. And one of those through the, one of that was through the parent lot and the smaller lot. Am I correct that the further subdivision, the dividing up, sticking in more houses, nevertheless would have to conform to the parent lot regulations for setbacks, side yards, hard services, and things like that?
Yes. So I think the intent of the planning commission was to keep the standards similar for middle housing, a single-family housing on purpose, because I think the direction was to have sort of consistency in regulations. This was more to just allow a different style of housing.
Okay, and so that, we can have the increased density, but the, as I said, the smaller lot's going to maintain those dimension and other standards of the parent lot?
Yes.
That's great. We cannot by state law request or impose sidewalk impact fees for ADUs, however, for other subdivisions like parent and smaller lots, could we still do that?
Yes, I think there is, there is a state law requirement that you have to exempt ADUs from impact fees. I don't think there is a similar state law requirement for further exemption that would be set by the city, but I can, I will double-check that
Okay.
with the city attorney.
And how we should, how should we call the, is the concept of the parent lot and the smaller lots, should, can we also refer to that as small houses, small lots? Is it the same concept, or is there a more precise way to refer to it?
I don't think there is a more precise way to, to describe it. I mean, you're talking about a process for creating lots, and then you're talking about what is actually built on a lot. So they are related but different.
Okay, so it's the parent lot and further subdivision at any rate, all right? And then I also saw that for impervious services, another encouraging sign was that I think it was pathways or impervious surfaces built for vehicle access to the smaller lots, was, was going to count against your impervious service for the whole area, is that right?
I, I believe, I, I believe so, but you've obviously been digging further in the weeds than I have right now, so let me check that.
Yeah, I think I saw it, so that's also encouraging. I think that's it, thank you.
Any further discussion? Do you have what you need?
I have what I need if, for the substantive amendments, unless there are any additional. So the substantive amendments that we will bring forward for for hearing would be on the maximum size for cottage housing and on the inclusionary zoning for the exemption based on unit size. So those will be for sure in front of the public hearing and the other materials to support. support that will be part of the public hearing as well.
Um, councilmember Marshall, followed by councilmember Shrubnik.
I move that we direct staff to uh prepare a proposed sidewalk impact fee, neighborhood sidewalk impact fee for parent lots and smaller lots. Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
Deputy Mayor, may I?
Oh, yes, thank you.
I I apologize, I just need some clarification. Um, so state law is very clear about how to impose impact fees, and there's a process and a method. Are you, is your motion to come back at a later time analyzing your own impact fees because you already have them, um, to include sidewalks? Or are you asking it to be a part of the uh middle housing? So the latter? If possible, uh, and if we, if it's not, we'll provide it. It's just there's, there's substantial steps and a whole different chapter. I think it's like chapter fifteen. So I just wanted, so if it's possible, we'll do that. Otherwise, we'll explain how to do it in the future. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Shrubnik.
Yeah, I, I would like to support this because I certainly, I, I certainly want more sidewalks. That said, um, this feels like it could be a potential, I mean, we were so careful to try not to disincentivize middle housing, and this feels like it could be a financial barrier. And if it wasn't, it would still be passed through um to the purchaser. So I'm, I'm gonna vote against it, but I I hear the, the need, and we definitely need the sidewalks, so I just don't think this is the vehicle.
Member Lutzis.
Um, just, could I ask a clarifying question?
Certainly.
Councilmember Marshall, is this like, in your mind, would you see this more so being applied to developments of a certain size or is it just all developments that use middle housing?
This is everything applied, uh, as applied to the parent lot and the small lot. So I think it's probably gonna, I would have it, it's everything uh that we cannot do. So that includes the ADUs, everything above the two ADUs, to answer your question. And then I just wanted, at some point, I probably want to speak briefly uh to my motion.
Councilmember Culver.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, I may have missed it. Do we have any vague ballpark estimate what that could be or is the point to bring it back to better understand what it could be?
Councilmember Marshall.
I, I'm gonna have a hard time bringing this back for a public, as part of the public hearing, frankly, um, because it is sort of a new concept to bring back. Um, we will be looking at impact fees, park impact fees rate study, um, that's on the docket, but I'm struggling as to language to bring back, to look at an exemption for this and the application of it, because my concern is, I need to kind of understand the implications of this and how it's applied and how it's exempted, and to try and get that ready to put on a public hearing without being able to present that information in advance of the public hearing. I, I would have a hard time doing that, frankly.
Thanks, I appreciate that, Ms. Bent. Perhaps I should have been more strenuous with it earlier. Um, I did think that my having introduced it in the council improved something like that in, in December was sufficient. Um, but I think that at some point, we've got to have a si- a sidewalk impact fee for the neighborhood and neighborhood sidewalk impact fee. So when the development goes in, it's larger than the one, single family plus the two ADUs, there's going to be an effect on the neighborhood as a whole. Um, and I, I think we have to look at putting that in there. Now, yeah, I recognize the crunch on that, and I wish it could be otherwise, but if it can't be done, perhaps it can't be done. But I, I don't see how we can keep Kenmore livable without asking for some contribution to the impact that's going to be the increase in those cars on the streets. Take a look, I think, you know, at any place in Seattle, the difference is they've got sidewalks. Many neighborhoods in our city don't have them. So I think it'd make it unlivable if we don't eventually include it.
Okay, I think it looks like we're ready. Mayor Herbig, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
No, it's totally fine. It's really easy to miss. Um, yeah, I think, I remember us discussing this on council, it must have been a while ago, where we put in, it wasn't impact fee so much as requiring frontage improvements depending on what sort of construction was going on, on things. And I, I can't remember the details because I feel like this was probably eight years ago or something. Um, it's probably worth revisiting that. Um, and it might have to be a discussion at a later date, but I think a lot of what councilmember Marshall is concerned about might be able to be addressed just through our frontage improvement uh regulations when there's new construction, because that is how we are getting sidewalks here and there and patches as, as new houses are going up. Um, but I think we all need a lot more information on and background on what exactly those regulations are and how they work before we jump in and, and talk about a new impact fee, because I think that's, um, I'm just not sure if this is the right vehicle. So um, for the moment, I'm going to oppose the motion, but I do support the need for sidewalks and for them to get built, and uh, and I think it's worth having a conversation about this at a later date.
Councilmember Lutzis.
Yeah, um, I, I agree with councilmember Marshall in terms of what we're looking for here. Uh, my concern is in light of what Ms. Bent has said, that it might be a little too packed now before the public hearing. Um, and so while I, I may have to oppose it now just so we can get this all approved forward, I would like to come and revisit the discussion when we have a little more time and can work through that and all the legal, um, you know, considerations that come with that rather than being rushed and, and certainly rushing our development department. So although I'm, I'm going to oppose it tonight, I don't oppose the issue, and I'd like to discuss it later.
Councilmember Culver.
Yeah, just briefly, I'll be voting for it, but uh, no expectation that this needs to come with the public hearing, just a show of support for it. So, yeah, totally understand the time crunch.
Clerk, do you have what you need um for this motion?
Motion? Yes, I do. Um, if we're ready to vote, the motion is to direct staff to prepare a proposed neighborhood sidewalk impact fee for parent lots and smaller lots. Councilmember Culver.
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
No.
Councilmember Lutzis.
No.
Councilmember Sasson.
I feel, I'm sorry, I feel confused about whether there's a timeline on this. Are we saying if I, if we, if we, I, I feel like I'm too unclear to vote. So I can pass or we can clarify for me, one or the other?
Is that an, okay. Is that an abstention?
Uh, yes, I think so.
Councilmember, um, Marshall?
Yes.
Mayor Herbig?
No.
Deputy Mayor O'Kane?
No.
With four noes, the motion fails.
Thank you. Okay, anything further on this topic that you need from us?
So we will draft revised code, and we'll advertise this for a public hearing on June ninth, and then following the public hearing, we would look for council direction with the goal of bringing back an ordinance on June twenty third for adoption.
Thank you so much for your presentation, answering questions. Um, yeah, thank you. Now on to staff reports.
Uh, yes, City Manager.
Thank you. I, I did want to thank our partners at Lake Forest Park and Shoreline for our joint meeting tonight. I think that was really important. We do that on a regular basis, and those are always enjoyable events. And looking forward to the retreat on Saturday, so everybody has now received tonight your retreat packet. Mayor Herbig will get yours to you as soon as we can, and all the materials are uploaded uh as of today. So our community members can see our materials and our plan for the retreat. We're working hard on bringing you a really great day on Saturday. And then I also just wanted to share that we met today on the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the senior center and the contracting for us. I appreciate Jennifer Gordon quickly turning around the forms that were needed, and they have a meeting tomorrow, so we'll keep you posted on that progress, but um, the plan is to hopefully get that contract signed quickly and bring that to you on a consent agenda soon. And I just wanted to share a couple other things this week. We had a community court celebration that was really fun and really appreciated Mayor Herbig's involvement in speaking at that event. And also, the McMaster Awards happened on Wednesday, and we have been working with the Kenmore Heritage Society to have the McMaster Award winners come to a future council meetings possibly as early as next week. So stay tuned for that. That would be a great where's the fun. So excited to recognize those winners. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. On to councilmember reports and comments. Councilmember Culver.
Free Palestine, happy Monday.
Councilmember Marshall.
Well, I saw the waterfront activities fair this last weekend, and I caught a little bit of that at La Ahwadish, saw councilmember Shrubnik in some sort of hand launch craft of venturing out there. Maybe it was the outrigger. It looked very cool, a lot of people enjoying that. I didn't get a chance to see the, the hangar, but uh, everything looked really, really cool. So good job on the city for organizing that and the volunteers.
Councilmember Sasson.
Yes, thank you. I have two quick things. Uh, one is a reminder that this is Affordable Housing Week, and that this coming Wednesday, May fourteenth, from eleven to one here in council chambers, we have a uh lunch and learn, a live stream broadcast, uh, unlock the truth about homelessness and housing featuring Greg Colburn. This is Kenmore in coordination with NUSA. We'll be joined by Juliana Pooley, who is um the NUSA Housing Committee Chair and our own Tambi Cork. And then um, uh, any and all community members are welcome to join for a conversation following the um, the uh, live stream broadcast. And if you want lunch, please bring your own. Also, it's Bike Everywhere Day, and so extra points from me if you also bike here. Um, my second point is a request. I have um been the primary person to, not the only person, but the primary person to do Monday coffee with council, um, and that has historically been the first Monday of the week, which does not fall on a typical council day, which adds uh an additional Monday responsibility. And I would like to propose that we shift Monday morning with coffee with council to either the second or the third week so that it corresponds, so that I can be more nimble in reporting back the concerns that I hear at council uh the, that, that same evening. I would like to request that we make that change.
Second.
Any concerns?
Maybe as part of that discussion, or maybe that's now, whatever, maybe adjust the time too. It can be a bit early, but uh, I like moving the day, certainly.
It's, it is, it is right now seven thirty to eight thirty, which frankly works fine for me.
The other coffee is the third, third week, so, but, you know, just saying.
But if we could do the second week, the second Monday, um, and depending on how hard you want to push for eight to nine, um.
I would move to amend to suggest eight to nine, if my colleagues will it so.
All right, great.
I, I think historically, the reason for the seven thirty to eight was because it's a weekday and people have to go to work. So I.
We could maybe do it seven thirty to, I could get there at seven thirty and you could get there at eight, which is what it's been. Yeah, so, seven thirty, second Monday.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, if possible, and, and, you know, I, I don't know if I want to make this amendment or not, would it be possible to start this a little down the line so folks have enough and don't show up at the next Monday morning thinking?
Yes, if someone else can be here on the first Monday of June, because I will not be here.
All right, thank you.
So my, my, my request is that we start in June with that, yeah.
It looks like we have unanimous consent. No, 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 no one opposing, so there should be no problem with that change.
Appreciate you all, and I'll see you, all my, all my Monday morning people, the second Monday.
Okay, councilmember Shrubnik.
Yeah, so this last weekend, we had not one, not two, but three waterfront-related events. Um, we had the waterfront fair, yes, and that was, and yes, I did try outrigger canoeing for the first time, and it was great. Um, and uh, there was a rowing event, a social Saturday row, um, and National Learn to Row Day is June seventh, which is totally open to the public, uh, it's free. Um, and then the other thing that was on the weekend, uh, the North Shore School District Rowing Program had a big uh ergathon and fundraiser, and that was in our town square, so that was exciting. Um, a, a brief update, um, just because I've heard there's interest on the pool issue with uh North Shore Parks and Recreation Service Area. As we've discussed before, Woodinville is uh looking at um a set of parcels that together would be sufficient to have a youth and community center and pool. They are still pursuing that. There is a fair amount of due diligence, um, issues with the property and the property owner, and we'll just leave it at that, so it's taking a bit of time, but they are still anticipating, um, hoping that that will work out, as is NPRSA. That won't be on the ballot in twenty twenty five, but um, could be, um, you know, in, in later years, assuming that, um, that that goes through. Um, and last thing, um, just want to remind folks that, um, you know, we, we do request, um, and I've experienced this, uh, prior approval, uh, to miss meetings, um, or approval, approval from the council to miss meetings. Um, and so, uh, just requesting that people do that courtesy of, of asking for approval and, and um, all of our meetings are important, um, including the ones where we are with other cities, even if they're more informal, they are still meetings, they're still listed as meetings. Um, and um, I think it's important and respectful to um try to be there.
Mayor Herbig.
Um, not a lot to report. Uh, I do want to um say that being at the McMaster's Awards is always one of my, um, it's always one of the highlights of my year. It's really exciting and fun to celebrate the folks that helped make Kenmore uh such a special place, and it was a really great event. Uh, great turnout, I was at the Aqua Club this year instead of at, um, instead of at the golf club, it's a nice change of scenery. Um, and it was just great to see everybody and see the excitement the folks have for uh volunteering for Kenmore, so that's all.
Thank you, and I have no announcements today, so this meeting is adjourned. Oh, Lutzis, sorry, sorry. Councilmember Lutzis.
I didn't gather.
All right, don't worry, I, it's okay.
I've fumbled a couple times tonight, excuse me. Okay.
In light of Peace Officers Memorial Day this week, again, I just want to thank and acknowledge our law enforcement officers in the city of Kenmore who serve our community enthusiastically, passionately, um, and we're grateful for all that you do in keeping us all safe, so thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Lutzis. I have no announcements. I have no announcements.